Ladies and gentlemen. Ladies and gentlemen. We're now at 7:30. If you could please find a seat, I would appreciate it. Thank you. It is now 7:30. I know it's a recognition and a very social event, but if you could please find your way to a seat someplace, it would be greatly appreciated. Hi, everyone. Thank you. Tonight's always one of the favorite meetings of the year, and it's very nice to see all of you out here to support all of the teachers of the year. We'll give another few minutes for some of the rest of our people that are coming in so they can find a place to sit.
You have to read your statement anyway, so...
Okay. Pursuant to the New Jersey Open Public Meetings Act, NJSA 10-4-10, adequate notice of this meeting has been provided by advertising such notice in the Home News Tribune, the Asbury Park Press Board Office, the schools' cable, Vision Channel 118, Verizon FiOS Channel 24, and filing such notice with the township clerk. Meeting was scheduled for tonight, Tuesday, May 17, 2016, and the board will take formal action on payment of bills and agenda items. Mr. Mara.
The Old Bridge Township Board of Education acknowledges that the law of this state establishes that members of the public, including members of the board, have the right to record public board meetings using audio or video recording devices, provided that that act of recording does not interfere with the business of this public board meeting. Therefore, the board makes it known that any such recording is to be considered the private recording of the individual and in no manner represents the official record of this board. The board therefore takes no responsibility for such private recording and completely disavows any future use.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Dunn.
Present.
Dineoff.
Present.
Hartman.
Here.
DePrima.
Here.
Ellis Foster.
Here.
Mongan.
Here.
Singh.
Here.
Weber. Andriani.
Present.
Quorum exists.
Thank you, Mr. Mara. Would everyone please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Okay. Chairs are a little rolly.
There's administrative corrections tonight?
Yes, there are. Mr. Mara.
Thank you, Mrs. Andriani. To board members, administrative corrections are reflected in your agenda and the attachments that was in your packet. Anything that is in gray is an administrative correction, except there were four items under Supplies and Equipment that were added to the agenda over the weekend. It was two bids and two bid awards. Anything in yellow on your agenda was not discussed at the draft agenda meeting last week and is therefore new. And members of the public, there are copies of all the administrative corrections up here on the stage to be distributed with the agenda. Thank you, Mrs. Andriani.
Okay. Code of Ethics, we have someone read one of our... One of the items every month, I think, Mr. Dunn? You volunteered?
I certainly did. Refuse to surrender his or her independent judgment to special interests or partisan political groups, or to use the schools for personal gain or for the gain of friends.
All righty. Approval of minutes. I need a motion to approve the following minutes for the Agenda Regular Enclosed Session from April.
I'll move it.
Thank you, Ms. Ellis Foster. I need a second.
Hartman will second.
Thank you, Ms. Hartman. Any discussion? Questions? Mr. Mara, please.
Dunn. Yes. Dineoff.
Yes.
Hartman.
Yes.
DePrima.
Yes.
Ellis Foster.
Yes.
Mongan.
Yes.
Singh.
Yes.
Andriani.
Yes.
Resolution one passes.
Okay. Thank you very much. Joe, down at the other end. Hi. Are you ready? There you go.
Hello. On March 31st, Old Bridge High School had a March Madness basketball fundraiser. We had a three-on-three tournament, and the proceeds for the game went to Camp Robin, and the top three teams actually went to Camp Robin on one Friday night, and they had a charity game with the people there. On April 5th was Peer Night. We have a promising group of juniors trying out for peer, and we expect them to be just as successful as the previous years. On April 6th, we had our Lip Dub. It was a great way for the entire school to be involved in one single event. We hope TV classes in the future will hold on to the tradition of making it. On May 10th, we had a Play For A Purpose Lacrosse Game. All the money we raised from the game is going to two families who have sadly lost their homes very recently. On May 27th will be Senior Takeover Day. Also the same day will be our school's honorary ceremony where all athletes that will be competing on a sports team in college will sign in our auditorium in front of their parents, friends, and family. And on June 3rd, the seniors will be departing for their senior trip to Disney. Also, before I go, I would just like to quickly say congratulations and thank you to the teachers who were given the Honor of Teacher of the Year. Your work does not go unnoticed. This district's educational success would not be what it is without your dedication. Thank you.
Thank you. Now comes our favorite time of the year, where we have the opportunity to recognize not only all of our teachers for their outstanding work and effort on behalf of the children of Old Bridge, but for the Governor's Teacher Recognition recipients for the 2015-16 school year. Mr. Sittidino, would you like to begin this? I believe we have 17 recognitions.
Yes. Our Teacher of the Year's recipient and our education support person of the year will be celebrated this evening, and we ask that our Instructional Council co-chairs, Mr. Ryan Sobin and Ms. Karen Foley, take over the ceremony. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Sittidino. Good evening. My name is Karen Foley. I'm the proud principal of Southwood Elementary School, and I am joined at the podium by Mr. Ryan Sobin, Special Education Teacher at Madison Park Elementary School, and we are the co-chairs of the Old Bridge Instructional Council.
The Instructional Council is an advisory committee comprised of teachers, administrators, and central administration team members. The purpose of the council is to collaboratively review and address issues and district policies to make recommendations for improvement. In addition, the Instructional Council is the steam engine that drives this wonderful teacher and educational service professional recognition program. However, this program would not be what it is today without the contributions from the OBAA, the OBAA, the OBSA, and the PTA President's Council.
It has been said, "The mediocre teacher tells, the good teacher explains, the superior teacher demonstrates, and the great teacher inspires." It is clear to me that we are in the presence of greatness tonight, and I'd like to thank the educators we honor here this evening for inspiring the children of Old Bridge. On behalf of the Instructional Council, congratulations to all of you. So without further ado, I would like to begin our recognition by introducing Mr. Chris McHugh, Principal of Carpenter School.
I'm joined at the podium tonight by our PTA President, Tina Gallagher, and M. Scott Carpenter's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Heather Sawyer. For the past 11 years, Ms. Sawyer has touched the lives of so many students she's come in contact with at Carpenter Elementary School. For her first nine years, she was in third grade, and in the last two years, she's moved up to our fourth-grade classroom. When I first got to Carpenter and became the principal, I had the entire staff, but we were missing somebody. Somebody wasn't there, and that was Mrs. Sawyer. She was out on maternity leave, and after a couple months, she returned back from maternity leave here, and I realized that she was the missing piece of the final piece of the puzzle here to complete our family. And it didn't take me long to realize what an amazing teacher she is and how dedicated she is to the students at Carpenter Elementary School. Mrs. Sawyer is involved in so many activities. She is our lead literacy teacher. She's our building tech support person. She's part of our school improvement committee. She's our character ed committee. She pilots our new district writing program. She is involved in our professional development committee. She joins Read Across America with us at our night event. She is a mentor to one of our new teachers. She's involved in our crisis management team. She's our building rep, which for many years, we've had a great relationship, and I truly appreciate your advice and help when we get together on certain items. She is part of our Caring Listeners Program, where we invite senior citizens to come in every Tuesday and read to our fourth-grade students, which is a great program. And her last program that I really want to specify is her Ellis Island Day. For the last several years, she's been organizing Ellis Island Day, where we turn our gymnasium into Ellis Island, and our students have the opportunity to go from station to station as if they were immigrants and get a true understanding of what the immigrants went through to become American citizens in here. Mrs. Sawyer is always looking for new strategies or new ways to improve her teaching. She's kind of our pioneer. She's the first to try something here, and many others will quickly follow in her way with that. What I always enjoy here is when I have the opportunity to walk by or stop by her classroom is when she's doing reading or writing. She is so passionate about both subjects, but when she reads for her students, you can feel that enthusiasm and passion. I put a couple teachers on mission to try to find this book, but nobody could find it. But when she teaches a novel to her students, I've never seen... There must be 300 sticky Post-it notes all over, red, yellow, purple. Every page has four or five different sticky notes on there because she wants the students to truly understand the lesson or tie-in information from personal life or experience with her students in there. She, I guess, is an avid reader, and something interesting I found out about her is that she had Harry Potter sent to her hotel when she was on her honeymoon because she wanted to be the first to get the copy of Harry Potter. Okay. She really enjoys social study, especially learning about her family history, and has done a tremendous amount of research on her family history. And she's a huge sports fan. She likes Yukon, March Madness, and a huge Rutgers fan. And we do have something in common. Mrs. Sawyer and myself have quite the sweet tooth. We like donuts, ice cream, and Muller's crumb cake that I try to bring in every once in a while from her. And I just found out, I did not know this, but there's a little secret hiding spot in her classroom where she has some goodies if you need a little late afternoon snack after the students have left in there. But enough of what I'm having to say here. I love when I have the opportunity to bring her students in, and this is what they said about Mrs. Sawyer. She's really nice and kind. She's a very good teacher. She takes time to help each one of us individually when we need it. She does talk about her dog a lot, especially her new puppy that she has. She makes learning fun, and the last two I thought were very important. When we do something wrong, she talks to us and explains to us how we can improve or make the right decision. She's not quick to give out any type of consequence, miss recess, or send to the main office, but she takes time to talk to us. And lastly, as one of her students put it best, "She's the best teacher I've ever had." It truly is an absolute pleasure working with Mrs. Sawyer, and I appreciate all of her hard work and dedication to our students at Carpenter Elementary School. And I know I speak on behalf of the entire Carpenter School's students, staff, and families. Congratulations on your nomination, and we truly appreciate everything you do and enjoy having you here at Carpenter Elementary School. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Ferry, Principal at Cheesequake Elementary School.
Good evening. I'm joined up here this evening by Mrs. Natasha Rivera, Cheesequake's Teacher of the Year, and Mrs. Kazmerek, our incoming PTA President. Close your eyes and imagine being placed in a different country where you are surrounded by people who do not speak a single word of your language. As you look around, you see people who look differently, dress differently, and have vastly different experiences, beliefs, religions, customs, foods, and holidays. And imagine it's not a one-hour experience, but that is your new life. Now, close your eyes again and imagine that you are a seven-year-old child, placed in this foreign land where everything is completely unknown, and you're surrounded in your new school with hundreds of children who are all speaking a different language. You move from math to English to science to social studies, and every word you hear from the teacher and your classmates is in a language you do not know. At Cheesequake, nearly 10% of our student population is comprised of students who are experiencing this as they arrive to our school, either speaking no English whatsoever or a minimal amount of English. We've all felt anxious in a new setting, but imagine the trepidation you would feel if you were a child that I just described. I have no doubt that some students in their first few days of school feel like their goal is surviving, but at Cheesequake, under the care and guidance of Mrs. Natasha Rivera, these students go from surviving to thriving. While we have a committed and talented team of teachers and staff, there's no person more influential to the success or failure of an English-language learner than an ESL teacher. Tonight's 15-16 Teacher of the Year for Cheesequake is one of the most extraordinary ESL teachers, or any kind of teacher for that matter, that I've encountered. She began her teaching career in North Brunswick, left the profession to raise her two daughters, and started a career in Old Bridge in 2003 as a long-term substitute at Old Bridge Adult High School teaching ESL. Ten years ago, she was hired to serve as a computer literacy teacher at the elementary school level here in the district. And four years ago, in 2012, she applied for an ESL position at Cheesequake and has been igniting the torch of learning in our ESL students ever since. As an aside, at Cheesequake, we have 18 different primary languages spoken in the homes of our children. Ms. Rivera brings a powerful, unique, and diverse skill set to her ESL teaching position. As a former computer teacher and a current building technology liaison, her technology skills are on point, to say the least, and she incorporates technology in her classroom daily. Because of this expertise, she also troubleshoots and solves technology issues that arise during the park administration, along with a colleague, to ensure that everything runs smoothly. She has been flatteringly nicknamed "A Park Wizard," and students and staff feel calm when they see her wearing a custom-made "Park Wizard" t-shirt during a test administration. To everyone in the audience, when I think of the dozens and dozens of ESL students who come through Cheesequake, I wish you could be there to see what I have witnessed. I have seen numerous students come into the school unable to speak a word of English, and I've watched them, and a few short years later, get up in front of the all-purpose room and speak articulately in front of 300 students and 30 staff members. It is like watching magic before your eyes. So Ms. Rivera, our "Park Wizard," is apparently also a magician. But the transformation of a child from a fearful, non-English-speaking newcomer to a confident, socially happy, and thriving student does not occur through some magic. It occurs through great teaching. Ms. Rivera connects with the hearts and minds of each of her students. She understands how nervous they can be walking into a country or school where a language is unknown, and immediately allays their fear from the first hour into school, making them feel safe and happy through her warm smile, engaging demeanor, and genuine interest in getting to know them. She advocates for ESL students with other teachers, helping them provide a connected and articulated safety net for them that lasts throughout the day, ensuring that our whole team is challenging and supporting them in every step of the way. Ms. Rivera puts extensive time and effort into going above and beyond to plan the absolute best lessons possible for her students every day. She and her students use technology daily in numerous ways, and students thrive with the apps, websites, iPads, and Smartboard being leveraged in the best way possible every day. Ms. Rivera scours Twitter and the Internet, connected with an online ESL teacher community, to stay on the cutting edge to ensure that she's bringing her students the best techniques and resources possible to help their learning explosively blossom. Her students are taught the weather, the holidays, and so many traditions of our country that we take for granted. Because of her guidance, they are some of the most respectful, kind, hardworking, and enthusiastic students in our school. Her students relate to her for many reasons, but one of the most powerful is the fact that Ms. Rivera tells them that she has walked in their shoes. Ms. Rivera grew up in Venezuela. When she came to the United States at age 20, she spoke very little English. In fact, she had to enroll in ESL classes prior to beginning college. What a powerful perspective to bring to the classroom and what an example Ms. Rivera is to her students. She's a shining beacon and extraordinary role model for our students. She's an example of the American dream fulfilled, and like all the outstanding teachers in this room tonight, is an example of how an exemplary teacher transforms the lives of children in profound ways. To see non-English-speaking students flourish and blossom into the articulate, successful students really is nothing short of miraculous. Ms. Rivera's students know that she has walked in their shoes, and because of her, our ESL students stand in their own shoes, feeling at home here, confident, happy, and successful, fully ready to go sprinting out into middle school and eventually the world. Because of Ms. Rivera, these ESL students will achieve unbounded success and will be ready to make the same kind of profound impact in our world that Ms. Rivera has. Congratulations, Ms. Rivera. At this time, I'd like to call to the stage Ms. Gramana, the Principal of Cooper Elementary
Good evening. Having a job is often something we do to earn money. With teaching, however, I assure you, anyone who spent any time in the classroom can tell you that where we all have had jobs, the classroom does not fit into that category. It's a passion, a calling, and a lifestyle. Room 108 at Cooper defines what teaching is, what it looks like, what it feels like. And at any part of the day, the curriculum is present. It's tangible. But right alongside all of that is a teacher's heart, compassion, patience, and love. She inspires all who join her to be the positive role model we all need for our students. Over the years, Old Bridge has inspired many a student to go on to achieve great things. And here stands someone who serves as a living proof of said inspiration. We should stop a moment and thank her teachers from Voorhees, Salk, Old Bridge High School, and Kane, because she stands here demonstrating what a great teacher can inspire. Experts say that the impact of having an inspirational elementary teacher can determine whether a child even goes to college. And over the past seven years... Wait for it. Ms. Lanning has taught over 300 kindergarten students. All I have to say is I hope people are saving for college. In the words of Carl Jung, and I'm going to read this so that I don't mess this up, "One looks back with appreciation to the brilliant teachers, but with gratitude to those who touched our human feelings. The curriculum is so much necessary raw material, but warmth is the vital element to the growing plant and for the soul of the child." Ms. Lanning embodies that warmth for every student's soul. I leave you today with my adaptation of the nursery rhyme, "The Clock." And as any good educator does, we steal and we make our own. So I call this "The Teacher," and I did this for you. There's a great little teacher. In room 108 she stands, creating such wonderful lessons with her two little hands. She arrives every day in her car of white to share her love and knowledge and knowing what is right. And may we, like Ms. Lanning, stand daily with a smile so bright, with our hands and hearts ever ready to do what is right. Ladies and gentlemen, on behalf of the Cooper staff and students and Mrs. Fredericks, our PTA President, it is my honor that I stand before you today to present Ms. Elisa Lanning. At this time, I'd like to... Excuse me. At this time, I'd like to call up Dr. Tui.
Good evening, everyone. Along with every other administrator and staff member here today, I want to congratulate all the teachers of the year. But tonight, I am here to introduce the Teacher of the Year from the Glenn Preschool Program, Mrs. Alvarez is the epitome of a preschool teacher. She is dedicated, caring, and simply loves her students. When I asked her colleagues at Glenn School to describe Mrs. Alvarez, they said she is patient, knowledgeable, understanding, funny, upbeat, happy, and an overall wonderful person. It is these qualities that I am fortunate enough to see on a daily basis whenever she is interacting with her students, their parents, and her fellow staff members. In order to gather some inspiration for tonight's introduction, I got to work a little earlier than normal just to hang out in Mrs. Alvarez's room. I pulled up one of those extra-small preschool chairs and just sat right in the middle of her classroom for about 10 minutes. Needless to say, Mrs. Alvarez's room says a lot about her. There is student work covering every possible surface of the classroom. There are well-organized play areas for the students to participate in. There are hundreds of books, thousands of crayons, and at least 50 half-eaten glue sticks. However, the most important element I gleaned from sitting quietly in Mrs. Alvarez's room today was the knowledge that this will be the quietest the classroom will be all day. Every time you pass Mrs. Alvarez's classroom, there is always a pleasant voice directing her students to their activity or asking the simple phrase, "Are we making good choices?" Both from the appearance of the classroom and the persona of the teacher is obvious why Mrs. Alvarez is receiving this recognition tonight. Someone once told me, "Big kids have big problems. Small kids have small problems." Well, Mrs. Alvarez handles those small problems like the 29-year veteran that she is. Just today, I witnessed Mrs. Alvarez fix a student's hearing aid, expertly work with her powers to organize an activity, program the speakers of her classroom Smartboard, and all the while keeping a watchful eye on her students. It is amazing to watch and very difficult to duplicate. Too often, we take the skills and expertise of our veteran teachers for granted. Well, tonight, I am happy to say to Mrs. Alvarez, "You are an amazing teacher, and your students and your colleagues at Glenn are lucky to have you." Thank you and congratulations on this well-deserved honor. At this point, I'd like to welcome the Principal of Grissom Elementary School, Dr. Tony Rico.
Good evening. It's my honor and privilege to stand before you tonight to introduce the 2015-2016 Virgil I. Grissom Elementary School Teacher of the Year. As I sat in my office trying to figure out the best way to describe and highlight the wonderful professional that is Grissom's recipient this year, I could not help but keep coming back to the children's book, "The Little Engine That Could." This timeless classic has been used for many years to teach children the value of optimism and grit. In fact, based on a 2007 poll, the National Education Association named the book one of its teachers' Top 100 Books for Children. We all know how the plot of the story goes, where a long train needs to be pulled over a higher mountain. Many engines are asked to pull the train, but for various reasons, they fail. The request is sent to a small engine who agrees to try. The engine succeeds with this daunting task by not giving up and pulling the train over the mountain while repeating the iconic motto, "I think I can. I think I can. I think I can." Grissom's 2015-16 Teacher of the Year is much like "That Little Engine That Could." There have been many times over the past few years where I've concocted a crazy idea or learned of a new strategy, material, source, or application, and I go right to this teacher. We all know that every teacher has a lot on their plate, but I still ask her if she would mind trying out this new idea. Being the true professional that she is, meeting every task she has been faced with, she always agrees to take on that responsibility with a huge smile on her face. At Grissom School this year, we as a staff have put in a lot of research, study, and application with both differentiation of instruction and guided reading. This teacher has worked overtime in honing her skills in those two areas, while sharing her successes and helping others to achieve those same successes. Perhaps the greatest testament to her perseverance has been her mentorship of long-term substitutes Perhaps the greatest testament to her perseverance has been her mentorship of long-term substitutes that have served with her as grade-level partners. She's spent many hours guiding these novice teachers, steering them to reach their potential. She works hard, is organized, patient, understanding, compassionate, empathetic, and she has persevered, always moving forward whether it has been small distances at a time or great strides through both splendid and difficult times. So without further ado, before she finds another mountain to climb, I am proud to announce the little engine that can and does at Grissom School, Ms. Mandy Alpert. I'd like to call up Mr. Daley from Madison Park.
All right. Good evening. As Madison Park's principal, I am honored to be standing alongside Madison Park's PTA representative, which is a switch-up on me, my PTA president is actually stuck in traffic right now. We have Allison Kelly here with us, and also Madison Park's Teacher of the Year, Roseanne I'm fortunate that I got to know Roseanne before I even became principal of Madison Park. We met through the Oldbridge Education Association when I was membership chair and she was treasurer. We worked together figuring out membership and union dues, and she would ask me why there might be people not registered as members, but we figured it out. Even then, I was able to see Roseanne wears many hats, and she goes above and beyond with each one. Besides being a wife, a mother of three, an unfailing colleague, treasurer of the Oldbridge Education Association, I know Roseanne best as an altruistic, devoted, public educator. Roseanne has been fulfilling her dream and teaching full-time for twelve years in Oldbridge and Jersey City prior to her substituting for five years. Roseanne always wanted to be a teacher because she wanted to make learning fun and exciting for children. Who better to confirm that than her students? I met with them and asked them to tell me a little bit about Mrs. Corbett. As we all know, first graders tend to be a little bit forthright with their comments, and this is what they had to say. "I like to write with you. Thank you for making math fun." I had her over the summer. "You make learning fun. Thank you for caring for me and also helping me spell my words. Thank you for cheering me up when I am sad. Thank you for helping us when we need it. And thank you for being generous." I had to help him spell that one. These statements are a true testament to your commitment as an educator and shed light that you are fulfilling your dreams. Roseanne shared that one of her many priceless moments in teaching is when a student demonstrates that aha moment. I could not agree more. When that light bulb goes off, it's an exhilarating feeling. Roseanne said, "I want to be instrumental and help the children reach those moments." Well, you're doing that every day. Roseanne's approach to teaching has the perfect balance of appropriate instructional practices, empathy, and commitment. This balance allows her to meet the needs of Madison Park's diverse group of learners. It is evident that Roseanne is smart, articulate, and even a little edgy once you get to know As you enter Roseanne's room, you get embraced with warmth, you observe excitement, and catch curious learners asking meaningful questions. Roseanne also shared a childhood memory that resonated with me, and I was able to make a connection. Roseanne said, "In my heart, I always wanted to be a teacher, and as far back as I can remember, I would line up my dolls and hold class, as I'm sure many little girls have done. Personally, I did not have many dolls, maybe one, that I did line up. And I would tend to my imaginary students, family and friends, for whom they maybe did not like my authoritative teaching style. Thank you, Roseanne, for not having that." Wait. However, research does show that dramatic play enhances learning and supports literacy development. So that just means Roseanne and I were meant to be lifelong learners and share our passion. Roseanne, you are celebrated tonight for being a true role model to our students and to our colleagues. In the end, your efforts result in a boost of self-confidence and a positive self-image for the Madison Park community. For that, we thank you. Now I would like to call up principal of McDivitt Elementary School, Lori Coletti.
Good evening. It gives me a great pleasure to introduce Mrs. Phyllis Bloom, McDivitt's school's 2016 Teacher of the Year and McDivitt's PTA representative, Mrs. Bridget Halawa. Mrs. Bloom is joined this evening by her husband Neil and their wonderful children, Jessica and Zach, her dad Stan, and her mother-in-law Linda. Every once in a while, a very special person comes into your life. Phyllis is one of these people. Phyllis is the guidance counselor at McDivitt School. She listens and soothes, she supports and comforts, she calms and takes note of any and all issues. Phyllis attends to the students and community of McDivitt with her whole heart, a strong sense of integrity, and an abundance of kindness. Her continued dedication and devotion to the children of Oldbridge is an outstanding example of the thoughtful and compassionate life she believes in. Mrs. Bloom has been a model for good character and continues to be the first person to demonstrate grace under extreme pressure. Park, HIB, social interactions, tantrums, you name it, she's right there with a gentle smile and tender diplomatic words. Mrs. Bloom is a K-Kids advisor at McDivitt. As such, she helps plan and organize community service activities for the students, gives her free time to attend park cleanups, brings cheer to the Oldbridge seniors, assists with fundraisers for the Oldbridge Food Bank, and supports Oldbridge Kiwanis. Mrs. Bloom organizes the Pay It Forward and Service Learning events at McDivitt. As a school, we have participated in collecting sports equipment, adopt a school media center, ALS Fitness Day, coat swap, Toys of Joy, clothing drives, and fetch it forward to support the animal shelter, and these are just a few. Mrs. Bloom makes service to community fun, and the children love the opportunity to shine. Mrs. Bloom is part of the SPACE Committee, which is safety, parent advisory, and character education, and is a member of the McDivitt Character Leadership Team. She supports service learning. Mrs. Bloom works collaboratively with her peers to enhance and extend Pay It Forward into service learning. She's supported the fifth-grade Veterans Day presentations, the first-grade science presentation, and the second-grade conflict resolution presentation, all cumulative presentations for service learning. Mrs. Bloom is always available for both small and big problems. The children love her, and our whole school speaks the language of Kelso's Choices with Mrs. Bloom. They can't wait to work with Mrs. Bloom, who always understands how they feel and doesn't hesitate to locate and implement sound, social, and emotional strategies to help them. Let me share a little of what your colleagues and students have written about you. You have a heart of gold. I admire your patience and respect to the students and staff. You are willing to help anyone with anything. You support everyone around you. I love that you always smile. You are a warm, caring person, and every student who comes in contact with you is lucky. Your outstanding ability to demonstrate empathy and care is exhibited in your commitment to our students' all-around progress. You are genuine and considerate. The staff, students, and parents are proud to call you McDivitt's Teacher of the Year. At this time, I'd like to introduce Mr. Peyton from Memorial School.
First, I'd like to congratulate all of the Oldbridge Township Public Schools 2016 Governor Teachers of the Year. They bring great honor to themselves, their school, and the entire school community. I would like to welcome Memorial School's PTA President, Mrs. Lisa Levitt. Thank you for being here. Mrs. Florio, our Governor Teacher Award winner from last year, and this year's Teacher Award winner, Mrs. Carolyn Henderson. We are committed to higher standards and high academic achievement for our children. And it all begins with quality teachers. It begins with you, Mrs. Carolyn Henderson. I'm honored and delighted to be with you here tonight. Mrs. Henderson is Memorial School's Teacher of the Year. She truly embodies the six pillars of character. Mrs. Henderson has been a valued member of the Memorial faculty for fourteen years. She designs and delivers instruction based on the needs of her students. Her differentiated units of study are conceptual as well as stimulating. In her classroom, passion meets purpose, and extraordinary learning opportunities for all children abound. Her flexibility in working with students, teachers, and the public has earned her an invaluable reputation as an excellent teacher who truly cares about students. She is passionate about education, and she works tirelessly to create open-ended learning opportunities for all her students. Although she is happily married and a busy mother of two active daughters, Jillian and Julia, she is still involved in all facets of the school. Additionally, Carolyn is willing to share resources with fellow staff members and will always help to solve a problem. She is a real asset to Memorial School and the district. On behalf of the Memorial staff, I thank Mrs. Henderson for the many ways in which she has inspired the lives of her students and myself. Ladies and gentlemen, the catalyst for making the greatest difference in the lives of children at Memorial is Mrs. Henderson's diligence and unparalleled commitment to excellence every day. It is a great pleasure to congratulate you for representing our school tonight as the 2016 Teacher of the Year. To this end, I would like to introduce Mrs. Henderson's current student, Brady Cavallieri, to expand on this and certainly speak firsthand about his classroom experiences. I'd like to invite him to the podium at this time.
Good evening. My name is Brady Cavallaro, and I'm a fifth-grade student at Memorial Elementary School. I was one of the twenty-one lucky students to be placed in Miss Henderson's fifth-grade class this year. She was recently named the Memorial School Teacher of the Year. I am here tonight to share with you some reasons of why Miss Henderson is so deserving of this award. Miss Henderson possesses the qualities of a worthy teacher. She helps us get our acts together when it's time to get our work done. She gets us prepared for challenges in school like park and other tests. In addition, a big part of why she is so successful is that Miss Henderson makes learning fun. For example, she lets us work with partners and likes to joke around a lot during stressful time. As such a nice teacher, Mrs. Henderson makes us work, not just hand out rewards. We always feel welcome and comfortable in her classroom. Not only does she make us better students, but better people. In conclusion, Mrs. Henderson is a fabulous teacher. She prepares us and gets us ready for challenges in life, also to meet our daily expectations. Making learning fun is her thing along with making us work hard. She sets a great example for all the students in her classroom. Thank you, Mrs. Henderson.
Well said. Very insightful words, and I want to thank Brady. He's very brave of him to come up and join me here at the podium. So well said for representing Memorial School. Congratulations again, Mrs. Henderson. At this time, I'd like to invite Dr. Giles, principal of Miller Elementary School.
Good evening, everyone. Joining me this evening is Mrs. Megan Brana, our PTA president, and also, it is my honor to recognize Miller School's 2015-2016 Oldbridge Teacher of the Year recognition recipient, Mrs. Lisa Ferlenzo. Tonight, to celebrate with her is her husband and her family. They are very excited with her special recognition. Ms. Ferlenzo began her teaching career as an ESL teacher in Oldbridge at Miller School just three short years ago. During this time, she has made a tremendous impact, not only on her students, but the entire Miller School community. Prior to coming to Oldbridge, Lisa taught second and third grades in Saraville for nine years. Mrs. Ferlenzo shared with me that she is so excited to be teaching English as a second language to her students because this is her passion and she is having the opportunity to do what she truly loves. Her enthusiasm for teaching is apparent. She offers her students many exciting and interesting activities that even keep new English learners always engaged. Lisa looks forward to getting to know each of her students and discover their special talents. I'd like to share a brief poem with you about what I think you give to each of your students, Mrs. Ferlenzo. It's called "A Teacher for All Seasons." A teacher is like spring, who nurtures new green sprouts, encourages and leads them whenever they have doubts. A teacher is like summer, whose sunny temperament makes studying a pleasure, preventing discontent. A teacher is like fall, with methods crisp and clear, lessons of bright colors, and a happy atmosphere. A teacher is like winter, while it's snowing hard outside, keeping students comfortable as a warm and helpful guide. Lisa, you do all of these things. With a pleasant attitude, you are a teacher for all seasons, and you have my deepest gratitude. We also wanted to hear from your students, so we asked each of your ESL students to just write a little something about you. I'm just going to share one, and then we have our book for you so that you can have this and see what they each think of you. It says, "Mrs. Ferlenzo, Teacher of the Year. Mrs. Ferlenzo is," and they filled in the blank, "is the best in the world. She's taught me everything I need to learn, and I like her because she is a great teacher, and I thank her so much." So that was just from one of your students, but each of them have written a special note to you. So tonight, Lisa, we thank you so much for all you do and a job well done. We're glad you're receiving this well-deserved honor. On behalf of the staff, students, and parents of Miller School, I congratulate you and I wish you continued success. Thank you again for everything. And presenting next is Mrs. Colleen Montori from Shiraz School.
Good evening, all. Joining me tonight is Shiraz Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Kristy Robinson, and our PTA treasurer, Once again, I must present deserving accolades to a Shiraz teacher who can be stolen from us because her placement is determined by the district needs of our Special Services Department. However, I am in possession of two, two IOU emails from Dr. Tuie, so I am fairly confident that she will remain at Shiraz. With that out of the way, it is my humble honor and distinct privilege to tell you about Shiraz Teacher of the Year. Will Rogers wore many hats, and when he was a newspaper columnist, he wrote these words that certainly apply to Mrs. Robinson. If you want to be successful, it's just this simple. Know what you are doing, love what you are doing, and believe in what you are doing. I can't think of a more poignant phrase to truly epitomize Mrs. Robinson. Her passion for her profession goes well beyond the expectations for even a great teacher. The intense emotions and compelling enthusiasm she exhibits when teaching her students, it's extremely contagious. One can't help but learn when in her presence. Mrs. Robinson's students, many autistic and previously nonverbal, are now speaking because of her efforts and commitment to their success. But her dedication does not end there. She is a staunch advocate for all children. She is the first to rearrange her schedule, work through her lunch, or volunteer her time to help support the various activities we offer at Shiraz. time to help support the various activities we offer at Sharaw. As we all know, our colleagues are an invaluable resource in the teaching profession. We bounce ideas off of each other, we celebrate our successes, and at times, we vent Room 111 and commiserate together. So naturally, I thought it only appropriate that I ask some of Mrs. Robinson's colleagues at Sharaw if there was anything I should include in my oration this evening. Well, one overriding response was laughter, followed by comments such as, "You can't share what I will tell you at a board meeting," and, "My stories aren't appropriate to be heard on TV," and, "Mr. Sedidino can't hear what I want to say." So now that I think about it, I really am not quite sure if we should be honoring her or firing her. Now, 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 I don't want you to get the wrong idea. In addition to being a superior educator, Mrs. Robinson brings joy, laughter, and fun to our building on a daily basis. And as industrialist and philanthropist Andrew Carnegie said, "There is little success where there is little laughter." And I would be truly remiss if I didn't comment on Mrs. Robinson's willingness to partake in morning and afternoon bus duty. Like the postal service, neither snow nor rain, neither heat nor sleep stops her from greeting our parents and ensuring the safety of our children. You see, as a speech therapist, Mrs. Robinson isn't required to do bus duty. But fortunately, she understands the importance of safety and numbers to make sure our kids remain safe in an environment of cars, buses, and vans. When Ben Franklin said there were only two things certain in life, death and taxes, he didn't know of Sharaw or Mrs. Robinson. So I think it only fitting that in addition to all those other things, awards she may be getting, I present her this token illustrating the Sharaw proclamation.
Which is?
Death, taxes, and bus duty! Okay, I need to end on a serious note. Mrs. Robinson never bites off more than she can chew, but I believe she has bitten off more than most of us can chew in a lifetime. Whether it is classroom instruction, extracurricular activities, or school assistance and support, Mrs. Robinson seems to operate under this philosophy. If you wait until you can do everything for everybody instead of something for somebody, you will end up doing nothing for nobody. Fortunately for Sharaw, Mrs. Robinson will do anything for anybody, which makes us a very lucky school. And thanks to Simon and Garfunkel, I get to say, and here's to you, Mrs. Robinson, Sharaw's Teacher of the Year! At this time, I introduce my colleague from Shepherd School, Mr. Maranzoli.
You ready? Well, good evening. I'm joined here at the podium by Mrs. Vega, our PTA President, and Shepherd School's Teacher of the Year, Allison Freeman. Now, as you all know, tonight is a special night where we honor and take some moments to acknowledge the qualities that have been highlighted and recognized in the outstanding teachers of our buildings. Now, in life, we, everyone, is surrounded by teachers, individuals who work to help us become better at something. It is certainly one of the noblest and one of the oldest professions. True, masterful teachers love their craft and their skill. And it truly is a skill. It is often said that teaching successfully takes special skills, patience, and caring. Well, these qualities abound in the candidate that was selected by her peers and named as Allen B. Shepherd's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Allison Freeman. Now, this teacher, new to Shepherd, is certainly not new to the district or new to me. In previous years, on this night, I had the privilege to honor individuals who had taught me. Well, this is the first time now, tonight, that I have the privilege to honor one of my own former students, who I welcomed to Shepherd at the beginning of the 2015-2016 school year as our new speech-language specialist. Now, for those who might raise their brows at hearing speech therapist, or speech specialist, or speech-language specialist, I will say that the amount of teaching that occurs in that room just adjacent to the office, which I hear all the time, is truly tremendous. And while some teachers have to wait a while to see student progress, Ms. Freeman's students truly astound me in their daily linguistic advancement and development. Not a day goes by that I don't hear students laughing and shedding their fears and self-consciousness under the guidance of such a patient, energetic, fun, loud, and incredibly, incredibly talented and skilled teacher. Ms. Freeman embraces all her students, sometimes literally, and new colleagues immediately saw that this high-energy go-getter wanted to give her students her all. Don't let her size fool you. She will fight for what she believes is right and will advocate for her students without hesitation. She is also meticulous, especially with scheduling. In fact, I must have at least 25 updated schedules in my folder as she immediately presents me with a new, fresh, corrected copy, because the scratched-out one just won't do. And isn't that what we want for our students? Isn't that what we want for our children? Someone who will strive to do things right every single time? I'm so proud to see what Ally has developed into. Once again, it is my pleasure and honor to name Allen B. Shepherd's Teacher of the Year, Ms. Allison Freeman. Now, I would like to call to the podium the Principal of Southwood School, my friend, my colleague, my neighbor, Ms. Karen Foley.
Thanks, Mr. Maranzoli. Good evening again. I'm joined at the podium by Southwood School's Teacher of the Year, Mrs. Naomi Turani, and our PTA President, Mrs. Stephanie Stellingroth. Mrs. Turani has been a computer teacher at Southwood for the past two years, and although that's been a relatively short period of time, she has made a lasting impact on the students and staff at our school. When Mrs. Turani is not working with the children of Olbridge, she's caring for the love of her life, her two-year-old daughter Faith. She enjoys spending time with her husband Dave, and is especially dedicated to family, especially to her mom Molly and her dad Bob, who are joining us this evening. I was thrilled last year when I received the news that Naomi had been assigned to Southwood School as a computer teacher. You see, Naomi and I were colleagues at Carpenter School for nine years. I knew firsthand that she was just the right person for this position and what a valuable asset she would be in the computer lab. Although this becomes a shock to my present colleagues, I was not the most tech-savvy teacher at Carpenter School. This was well before Real Time, Parent Portal, Gradebook, and Park Testing. In fact, we were just making the transition to entering report card grades on the computer. I can remember spending hours entering my grades and comments, and when I submitted them to our principal, Jack Phillips, the grades were gone. Panic-stricken and approaching DEFCON 1 level, I fled to Naomi's classroom for some technology intervention. In no time, she recovered the missing grades, saved the day, and preserved my sanity. The qualities that make Naomi an outstanding teacher are the same today as they were during all those years that we worked together. She's a team player, who's always willing to lend a helping hand. When it comes to technology, there is no one better. And Mrs. Turani has been an invaluable resource at Southwood School in all things related to Park Testing. This is no small feat. She's a troubleshooter and a problem solver, and I truly feel a weight lifted when she is in our building because she gets the job done and always with a smile. I reached out to one of our former colleagues, Deborah Shaw, who wanted to share some sentiments about Mrs. Turani. Naomi loved computers. She always did. It was her dream to become the computer teacher. What I always appreciated most was her willingness to work collaboratively, whether it was a project about the states or the colonies. Naomi was always willing to lend a helping hand. Mrs. Turani's students at Southwood seemed to agree. A fifth grader remarked, "I love the projects we do together. She's always right there whenever we need assistance." One third grader described her as a very loving teacher. "The way she smiles is great, and she's the best computer teacher ever." It is truly with great pleasure and heartfelt gratitude that I congratulate my colleague and friend, Mrs. Naomi Turani, as she is named Southwood School's Teacher of the Year. And next, I'd like to introduce Mrs. Courtney Lowery of Voorhees School.
It is my honor tonight to introduce Mrs. Nadine Waldman, as recipient of this year's Teacher of the Year award for Voorhees School. Mrs. Waldman has been part of the Olbridge community for over 24 years. She began her career as a fourth-grade teacher at Southwood, then moved for a brief time to Cooper. Next, Mrs. Waldman spent over 10 years as a fifth-grade teacher at Sharaw before finding her home here at Voorhees as a fourth-grade teacher eight years ago. In such a long career, Mrs. Waldman has had many, many students, and some of whom she is proud to work right next to at Voorhees School. Mrs. Waldman is the kind of person that is willing to go the extra mile to help out her students or colleagues. Mrs. Waldman has participated in the Rutgers Math Fellowship and is always more than happy to share any new tips or strategies she has learned. She is the Study Island Liaison for the building and assists every year to plan the building's Relay for Life events. Mrs. Waldman also volunteered to be the math lead teacher. She is willing to spend her extra time to help out anyone who needs it. If I ever need a volunteer for any project, I know I can count on Mrs. Waldman. Mrs. Waldman takes that same caring and helpful approach to her students as well. When one of her students was struggling in class and parents couldn't make it to school during the day, Mrs. Waldman met them at their business to make sure they could collaborate on ways to help the child. She routinely contacts families to do whatever is necessary to help her students succeed. Students, when talking about Mrs. Waldman, say she makes whatever we're doing fun. Her classroom is full of collaboration. She's even willing to demonstrate a dance in the middle of an observation to get the students moving. Mrs. Waldman's enthusiasm for math is outmatched only by her enthusiasm for social studies. Her students fondly remember Mrs. Waldman pretending to be Mrs. Guggenheimer, her other personality with accent and all, who needs to learn everything there is to know about New Jersey. Students for years to come remember the information they learned in Mrs. Waldman's social studies class. Mrs. Waldman's passion for teaching mirrors only her passion for her family. She is proud to share updates of her daughter Joanna's upcoming wedding or share adventures about watching her son Benjamin's triathlons. Thank you, Mrs. Waldman, for everything you do each day to help the students and staff of Voorhees School. I would now like to introduce Mr. William Rezis, Principal of Jonas Salk Middle School.
Good evening, everyone. Joining me is my PTA President, Miss Lucy Kurtz, and it's with our great pleasure to introduce Ms. Darlene Coughlin, our Jonas Salk Middle School's Teacher of the Year. So, Ms. Coughlin has been educating the students of Jonas Salk Middle School, just in our building, in special education for the past 27 years in every subject area. I've read that it takes five years of focused practice to become an expert or consider them a master in any particular field. Well, to call her a mastered or an expert educator would not do her nearly enough justice. Obviously, she is without question an excellent teacher that provides communities' children a nurturing learning environment. But Darlene has done so much more beyond the demanding role of an educator. She has formed lunch groups with our child study team and nurse to help students socialize and build their self-esteem. When we are in need in home instruction, she's always there to assist her students. Additionally, she finds time to beautify our school for the holidays with her students, inspiring a sense of community within our school. She was also one of the very first special education teachers in our district to pilot and develop our in-class research program. This work has laid the foundation for years of collaborative efforts between our general education and special education programs. One defining characteristic that makes Darlene such an outstanding teacher is her authentic love for her students, and with it, the ability to see the strength in every child she works with. This has allowed her to reach countless children and inspire them to reach goals they have never considered before. Ms. Coughlin, you have inspired students, teachers, our administration for the past 20 years, 27 years. Thank you for all you do for our school, our district, and this community. Please welcome Dr. Martha Simon, Principal of Carl Sandburg Middle School.
Good evening. I'm joined tonight by Roxanne LaConte, our PTA President. And on behalf of the students, the staff, and the families of Carl Sandburg Middle School, it is my pleasure to recognize our Teacher of the Year, Mr. Chris Lanagro. Mr. Lanagro has been a social studies teacher at Sandburg School for the past 18 years. He's a product of the Olbridge School system, attending Shepherd School, Salk Middle School, and Madison Central High School. And after completing his student teaching at Salk Middle School in the spring of 1998, he was hired that fall by Joe Weidra to begin his teaching career at Sandburg. Mr. Lanagro provides an enthusiastic classroom environment where students engage in lively conversations. It's never quiet in Mr. Lanagro's room. He brings history to life using a wide variety of resources to give the students different perspectives. He works collaboratively with his colleagues to prepare students for special events. Just today, he and his colleague, Mr. Feinstein, brought a group of honors social studies students to participate in the New Jersey Bar Foundation mock trial, and pictures will be on our website by tomorrow. He also plans off-site activities to enhance his program. This includes his annual walk to the 9/11 memorial here in Olbridge, where he's frequently joined by local members of the community, including the mayor. In addition to his teaching responsibilities, Mr. Lanagro serves our school as a coach. He volunteers for numerous activities, including dances and class trips. He helps with traffic control for some of our events as well. He was recently a contestant for our Kids Night Out Jeopardy contest, and there's a rumor that he volunteered for a dunk tank for the eighth-grade barbecue. That might be news to him tonight, but apparently, he's been volunteered for that. Our school is a state and a national school of character, and Mr. Lanagro serves- And Mr. Lanegro serves as a role model for our students by truly reaching out and getting involved in our community and being a role model for what it means to show good character. He's dedicated his work to local veterans and veterans organizations. Recently, he joined 19 Sandburg staff members to participate in a Habitat for Humanity build in Newark for a condo that's being built for a disabled veteran. Mr. Lanegro is leading our Sandburg's Annual Steps for Vets event Friday, May 27. Students will be joined by local veterans to raise money for the GI-GO Fund, an organization dedicated to providing services to returning combat veterans. In Mr. Lanegro's family, dedication to our schools is a family affair. He's joined this evening by his parents, Nancy and Frank, and Frank is a frequent visitor to our building, representing local veterans and speaking to our students about what it's like to come back as a veteran and how meaningful it is for us to continue the work that we're doing at our school. He's joined by his brothers Frank and Damian, Damian's also a teacher here in the district, his beautiful daughter Chelsea, who I had the pleasure of teaching, who just finished her student teaching, what, a week ago? Just about a week ago, two days ago? And his niece Jenna. I know you will join me in congratulating Chris and thanking him for his dedication to the students of Sandburg School. And now I'd like to introduce my colleague, Tim Dolan, Principal of the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center.
Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I'm joined here at the podium tonight with the Olbridge High School EMGNC PTA President, Kim Castain, and the 2016 Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center Teacher of the Year, Kimberly It's no surprise to myself or anyone else associated with the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center that Kim Hoppe was named the 2015-16 Teacher of the Year. For most of her brief but flourishing seven-year career as an educator, Kim has built a reputation of being nothing short of the standard bearer in which most teachers measure themselves against in our building. Her professionalism and reputation as a teacher, a coach, a colleague, and a mentor exceeds far beyond the boundaries of the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center and extends quite possibly to the Olbridge main building and maybe even throughout the Olbridge School District as a whole. But what makes Kim truly special is her eternal bond that she has forged with Olbridge over the course of her professional and personal life. Born and raised as an Olbridian, Kim is a lifelong knight, a product of the Olbridge School system. She attended Grissom Elementary, then onto Salk Middle School, and finally, Olbridge High School, where she stood out as both a student and an athlete on the soccer field before graduating in June of 2003. Which, in a poetic touch of irony, brings us to one of the many unique circle-of-life stories that seem to circle around Kim's career. As it turns out, 13 years later, Kim would go on to inherit the honor of Teacher of the Year from her former coach and mentor, the same Robert Lotsey who was chosen as the 2015 Teacher of the Year and coached her so many years ago, and to who this day she coaches with on the soccer field. In the classroom, Kim's value is immeasurable. The greatest compliment that I can bestow upon her is that she is the most talented teacher I have come across in my almost 20 years as an educator, a teacher, and administrator. There is not one thing that Kim can't do in the classroom. I've seen her introduce a new English app and deliver a background lesson on middle-age economics in the same class. I've witnessed her turnkey iPad lesson that included an automatic response scoring for teachers, many of whom had no idea that this even existed, so that they can measure the effectiveness of their lessons while volunteering to present this during a PLC. And most impressively, I've looked on in amazement as she's quieted an auditorium full of 14 and 15-year-old students with the utterance of a single word. And I'm not the only one in Olbridge who recognizes her talents, because my friend, standing over there, and longtime partner and colleague, Mr. Sasso, never misses an opportunity to pitch a so-called "trade" for her, as he calls it, to ascend to the big house. So I've been, I put the franchise tag on her, she is untradeable. Kim has the unique ability to make almost any lesson relevant and fun, whether she is defining a Shakespearean prose or simply conjugating verbs. She treats every lesson like it is the most important lesson that she has ever delivered. The passion that Kim brings every day to the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center reminds me of a framed quote that used to hang above the door of my old high school coach's office, the one that sat deep in the dungeon locker rooms of the old building that I attended. It was a famous quote that Joe DiMaggio, a legendary player, whose career spanned across most of the World War II era, was known for his tremendous talent and unfettered passion, just like Kim. Once, towards the end of his career, a reporter asked him, "Why, with the season winding down in late September, does he play so hard in front of such sparse crowds?" And his answer was simple: "It may be the only time someone's ever seen Joe DiMaggio play." Kim embodies that spirit every single day in her classroom. She treats it like it may be her last lesson that she's ever delivered, and that every student in that room could one day go on to ascend to the presidency of the United States of America. It's that passion for teaching that sets her apart from her peers. It's a passion that I believe was planted many years ago in a story that she shared with me most recently. The year was 1999, and Kim wasn't known as Ms. Hoppe yet, she was still Kim Hoffmann. One day, while sitting in Katie Manona's short story slash science fiction class in what was known at the time as the West Campus, now it's Carl Sandburg Middle School, she was assigned the lesson that Kim, and probably many of her classmates, thought was just another teacher-contrived ploy to write something substantial in a class. Mrs. Manona had the students answer what, in their minds, would be their perfect life in 10 years. Kim gave it some thought, then dutifully completed her assignment and handed it in. As the story goes, once Miss Manona was in possession of everyone's assignments, she promised that she would file them away, and then in 10 years, pull them out and mail them to them, no matter where they lived. She swore she would find them. This, of course, was met with a smatter of giggles amongst Kim and her classmates, but Mrs. Manona swore that she would find them. Eventually, Kim graduated, moved on to college, and forgot about Miss Manona's pledge. That was until September of 2009, when seated amongst a crowd of teachers returning from summer vacation in this very same auditorium, during one of Dr. Bosco's famous pep rally-like kickoff-the-season, school-year speeches, Katie Manona approached Kim in congratulating her, congratulated her for becoming a teacher at the district. Then, to Kim's surprise, handed her an envelope. Kim immediately remembered her promise of 10 years ago and opened it. She quickly read it, and to her amazement, she had, 10 years later, actually attained her perfect life. She had written in that classroom 10 years prior that she wanted to be a teacher and a coach at Olbridge High School. The story just made me think of what a special place Olbridge is. Kim's dreams had come true, and since then, she has never failed to live up to that dream. And in my opinion, the opinion of many of her peers, Kim has become one of the most highly-respected accomplished educators in the Olbridge School District. So at this time, it is my pleasure to introduce the Ellen McDermott Grade Nine Center 2015-16 Teacher of the Year, Kim Hoppe. At this time, I'd like to introduce my colleague and friend, Principal of the Olbridge Main
Good evening, and congratulations to all of our winners tonight, especially Kim. Great job. I do have the pleasure to see Kim in action, she truly is amazing. I'm delighted to be here tonight, and Ms. Castain, our PTSA President, is over there taking pictures. Thank you for being here as well. And I am joined this evening by Olbridge High School's 2016 Teacher of the Year, Ms. Connie Ms. Kim epitomizes a truly effective teacher and shows a genuine care and respect for all of her students. She brings out the best in them and helps them understand that if they use their gifts, work hard, and follow their hearts, they can succeed. Ms. Kim makes a difference each day, and her commitment to Olbridge High School is steadfast. It is truly an honor to work with her. Joining me this evening at the podium are two exceptional young ladies, Christina Mish and Katerina Pate, who will be graduating in a month from now and whose lives have been affected for the better by Ms. Kim. I ask each of them to say a few words because I know their words are much more meaningful than mine could ever be.
Good evening. My name is Christina Mish, and as a sophomore, I had the distinct pleasure of having Mrs. Kim as my APUS History teacher, and in the years since, I can truly say that she has become a mentor to me. Her encouragement, her compassion, and her hard work have helped to shape the student that I am today. For instance, as she was sitting here this evening, waiting to be recognized for the very thing that she does the best, she was answering scholarship emails to ensure that each and every one of her students were recognized for their hard work. And she thought not of herself, but of us, and I can't thank her enough for that. As I leave for college in the fall, I will always remember your accurately, accurate depictions of battlefields and your boundless love for Thomas Jefferson that brought so much joy to your classroom. So congratulations on being Teacher of the Year, and thank you so very much for being my in-school mom. There is something to be said about a woman who loves her job so much she'll drive two hours every day to get there. And there is something about Mrs. Kim that makes me utterly believe that if you love people, and life, both will love you back. If you treat your students and your coworkers like family, you will make them one. Mrs. Kim is the kind of woman who knows what she brings to the table and is therefore unafraid to sit there and stand for something alone. She is the kind of woman who doesn't need to hand out a textbook or be on someone's schedule to fuel a student's mind and broaden their horizons. And there are a thousand things to be said about the doors she has opened for me and 14 years of students, and my best attempt is to say that I am blessed to have Mrs. Kim in my corner and my life.
Thank you. One final thought, and in my opinion embodies the kind of person Ms. Kim truly is. At the high school, the Teacher of the Year receives the coveted Best Parking Spot in the Lot Award. Upon learning of this honor, Ms. Kim, who also serves as the chairperson of our senior scholarship program, asked without hesitation to give up that spot and raffle it off so that she can earn more money to give back to our seniors. And that's just the kind of person that she is, and we are certainly blessed to have her here at the high school. And on behalf of all of our faculty, staff, and students, we are so proud to recognize you, Ms. Connie Kim, as our Teacher of the Year.
Okay, at this time, I would like to call Ms. Karen Diamond, Cheesecake's Nurse, and Ms. Kazmerek, our future PTA President. What a tremendous honor it is tonight to get to speak about a second extraordinary member of the Cheesecake staff, Ms. Karen Diamond. Mrs. Diamond was named by the school district's instructional council as the 2015-2016 Educational Support Professional of the Year for the entire school district. The nurses, secretaries, paraprofessionals, custodians, maintenance workers, counselors, educational service providers, and a long list of other educational support professionals are in many ways the backbone of any good school district. Part of the reason we have become an exemplary school district is because we have top-notch, professional, and hard-working team of support personnel that allow us to thrive. So when I learned that Ms. Diamond received this award, I knew what a big honor this was for her. At the same time, I can personally attest with great enthusiasm, as could every person that knows her and works beside her every day, that this award for Ms. Diamond is richly deserved praise and recognition. Ms. Diamond is humble and doesn't like to be in the spotlight. Well, Ms. Diamond, you can run from the spotlight, but can't hide right now because you are very deservedly standing in front of a packed auditorium as we all, at this moment, honor you. And what an honor it is to work beside Ms. Diamond. She may not like the spotlight, but her presence, kindness, and positive energy shine alight on Cheesecake School Daily. But before speaking to that, to fully appreciate what a school nurse does in one day, here's what I might observe Ms. Diamond do in one day: clean out cuts, attend to students throwing up, check for fevers, provide nebulizer treatments to asthma students, examine head injuries from falls in the playground, feel for swollen glands, take countless temperature readings, take medications from parents, hear about students' ankle injuries from the night before, give out tissues to crying students, calm down upset students, check for hair lice, ask parents for a change of clothes for the youngest students who had accidents, assess highly allergic students to ensure that they're safe, provide epinephrine training to staff, hand out ice packs like they're water. Oh yeah, they are water. Provide medication to students on a given schedule, take the principal's blood pressure, immunization records into the computer, document every student visit, call countless parents to ensure that they're fully aware of any potential medical concerns, follow up with numerous students to monitor their progress throughout the day, and I could go on and on. This is one-tenth of what happens in a given day for a busy school nurse like Ms. Diamond. While you may not be aware, our elementary school nurses in Olbridge also serve as attendance clerks. Ms. Diamond diligently ensures that every student absence is accounted for, fielding or placing dozens of phone calls to parents, documenting the absences, and following up as needed. Ms. Diamond and I have also worked together to help reduce excessive student absenteeism, and she's diligent in ensuring that we send out attendance letters to elementary students whose absences reach a certain level. As a result of Ms. Diamond's diligence, excessive student absenteeism at Cheesecake has declined by over 50%. Aside from all I've already mentioned, Ms. Diamond answers phones, greets parents who arrive at the school, and ensures that parents securely sign their children out of the school. And as if Ms. Diamond didn't already have enough to do, she's the first one to volunteer for nearly every committee the school puts together to plan for new and exciting school activities or something that might otherwise enhance the school. Just reading this list makes me tired and might make anyone who wonder how one person could do all that in just one day. Ms. Diamond does all this and more with the warmest smile you can imagine, with the expertise of the highly knowledgeable medical professional that she is, with the discernment of a wise and experienced professional, with extraordinary attention to detail, and an unwavering passion and commitment to our students and school community. If you were to see Ms. Diamond's office at lunchtime and recess, you'd scratch your head and wonder how one person could juggle 10 children at once with various medical ambulances, some of whom need love and attention, some who need an ice pack and Band-Aid, some who need medication or treatment, and some who may need more urgent medical care. To spend five minutes in Ms. Diamond's office is to watch a master professional in action. It is also to watch a human being with one of the warmest hearts you could imagine, bringing smiles, warmth, care, concern, and cures to children who thrive from it. Parents have the utmost confidence that their children are completely safe at Cheesecake with Ms. Diamond in the nurse's office, and every child knows that her office is a safe haven, and she is someone who deeply cares. Cheesecake was named a National Title I Distinguished School for Academic Excellence. Ms. Diamond's work in reducing absenteeism directly led to improved academic results that helped us achieve this honor and level success. Like so many other fine schools in our thriving district, Cheesecake's also a national school of character, and this requires a complete team of committed professionals with a common vision. When I think of Ms. Diamond, and I'm sure all those in the audience who know her would agree, her example of character, warmth, and positivity are the first things that come to mind. Ms. Diamond's one of the kindest people I have ever met. Ms. Diamond, you embody everything that a school nurse should be and represent our school and the school district with class. school and the school district with class, professionalism, and distinction. I am humbled, honored, and immensely appreciative to call you a colleague and a friend, and I thank you for helping the students at Cheesecake not only remain safe, but to happily flourish under your loving care.[1724.28]